Good evening, everyone. Today's February 4th, 2019. The 28th meeting of the 23rd Council will come to order. Item number one, all councilors are present this evening. Yeah, they're all here. Next item is item two, A Moment of Silence with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Betten. And as we have our moment of silence, if we can just kind of reflect, it's the 10-year anniversary of the 11 women unborn child that were murdered on the west mesa. Thank you. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. And with this moment before we start the actual meeting, I would also like to ask all of us to stand for a moment of silence, please, for Rick Bresson, a local businessman who we might know as the person who's been worked with Mesa del Sol in the last few years, very well-respected and good gentleman. So if we could, please, just stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Next, we have civic parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please do, please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we're respectful of one another. Next is item number three, Proclamations and Presentations. First, we will go to Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. And we're having a presentation for the Senior Games, the 2019 National Senior Games that are coming this year. Everybody's very excited about that. So Director Anna Sanchez is gonna give us a presentation on how fundraising is going and how the preparation is going.
Madam Chair, members of the council, we're 129 days away from the National Senior Games. I hope you're excited. We have a group of folks here that have been instrumental in making sure that this is gonna be a positive experience for our athletes. Joining me today is Sue Lavacek and Jason Mountain. They are actually from the National Senior Games Organization in Clearwater, Florida. They are coming every month to make sure that we are on schedule and making progress towards the success of the games. Additionally, we have Cecilia Costa and members of her board that are also very instrumental, their expertise lending a partnership very important to the city and our progress. Also, I'd like to recognize our local organizing committee members, Mary Homan, who's also an athlete gold medalist from New Mexico Gas Company overseeing, as well as Tanya Armenta in the audience, of course, Visit Albuquerque is an integral part of our organization. Additionally, we have members of the city's National Senior Games team, if they'd please stand because of all the hard work that they're doing to make this positive. And last but not least, we have the Canyonettes Basketball, Senior Women's Basketball Team here in the audience.[298.12][298.12](laughter and applause). We anticipate that these ladies are gonna bring home the gold also, so we're really excited. But to kick it off, we wanna do a very short video for you.
I'm Diane M. Mueller. I'm 84 years old, live in Albuquerque, and I'm swimming the 50, 100, and 200 Butterfly Events and the 100, 200, and 400 individual medley events. I've been competing as a senior for the past 11 years. Qualifying for the National Senior Games is the highest level of achievement in the Senior Olympics. It is important to compete because it keeps me motivated, it keeps me goal-oriented, and it keeps me ready to do something good for myself. My favorite part is being in the water. I mean, it's, it's, it's very enjoyable to have the three-dimensional effect. I'm Diane Mueller. I'm 84 years old. This is still my natural hair color. Something about me and 10,000 of my closest friends swim in the National Senior Games here in Albuquerque in 2019. See you there.[384.96][384.96](applause).
So everybody has to come and cheer on Diane, please. So you can imagine that this event is not only inspiring, but we have so much to be proud of bringing it here to Albuquerque as a host city. And this is one that we want all of our community members to attend because it is free to go to any of these sporting competitions. As I've introduced, there are critical players, Cecilia Costa, Tanya Armenta, Visit Albuquerque, and then Sherman McCorkle is actually overseeing our, all of our contracts and just making sure that we are on point getting things done. But what I have provided to you also in your packets is our local organizing committee structure, because I thought that would be helpful to kind of understand the scope and really the depth of everything that's going into the planning of this event. A lot's happening behind the scenes, a very complex organizational chart, but everything from safety and medical, which is critical, to also volunteerism, our housing. There are more than 10 working committees that these folks are working with day in, day out, making sure that we're prepared for June. The next slide I wanted to talk about specifically is on our sponsors and our private fundraising supporters. Certainly, the council has been instrumental, and I cannot thank you enough for your, your ability to make sure that we had this here in June. But also certainly, our state legislature has made an investment on this. We have had many private partners that have come to the table, which some of them are mentioned here. Most excitingly, because of some of your hard work behind the scenes, we also have Wells Fargo and P&amp;M that have come to the table in the last week and a half. There are still many requests pending out there, and we do anticipate more announcements coming in the next month because we're getting into, really, the reality of this game is more than, less than six months away, and we want everybody to be able to take advantage of being a part of the, a part of the success. And just to give you a very broad overview, we have 18 venues across the city of Albuquerque. The hub referred to as the Village is gonna be at the Convention Center. That's where all the athletes will check in. So we're anticipating more than 10,000, and I have some exciting news to share in a little bit, but we're gonna have a taste of Albuquerque, really showing off our rich and diverse culture at all of these venues. It's gonna be an amazing part at the Convention Center to have health and wellness clinics, sporting demonstrations. There's already four sporting events that are actually taking place at the Convention Center alone. So on any of your time that you might have, please walk over to the Convention Center during those 11 days of competition and check out even those sports right across the street. And of course, a lot of these facilities are city facilities, so we've been very appreciative for the support that we've had to kind of freshen up some of our spaces, including, of course, what Counselor Harris put for our pickleballers, which is one of our largest registrants of athletes. 20 competitive sports we have now, I was gonna tell you 5,000 registered athletes. It's actually over 6,000 registered athletes that are already booking, making sure that they're coming here. So I think we're gonna well exceed the 10,000 athlete number. We anticipate about 15,000 friends and family that are also traveling here, so we want them to spend their dollars locally. We want them to be able to stay in our hotels. We want them to be able to go out and eat and also buy all of our products. And so with that, we need lots of volunteers. We have an effort of over 3,000 volunteers that we need to bring. We will take anybody from the young toddler that will be cheering on, folks that are finishing the cycling, to also those that can be able to help us pass out fruit and refreshments to the athletes that are, you know, maybe going down the trail in their competition. So just wanted to make sure that you knew that we had a lot of other special events that are tied into this, including the flame arrival ceremony, Civic Plaza, and that's Saturday, June 15th. Celebration of athletes is gonna be at the pit. And then, of course, the competition schedule is in front of you as well, because I thought it would show you all the different venues, oh, and the duration of those games as well. So we hope to have your support there also to medal some of these athletes, like perhaps the Canyonettes. That would be wonderful. And with that, that is, I stand for questions. I have members of the team available as well, please.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, this really sounded, sounds exciting. I really can't wait. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun, and it'll be, it'll be great to have so many visitors in Albuquerque. So 6,000, we're gonna have 6,000 athletes, right? So...
There's 6,000 registered already. They have until April 2nd. So we're anticipating over 10,000.
Over 10,000.
And Power Ball is a walk-on sport, so if anybody feels so inspired to go and do power walking, you can actually register on the first day of the games.
Oh, okay. I'm glad you said power walking, because at first I thought you said power ball.[657.13][657.13](laughter). So I'm working up to a question. I'm working up to a question here. And my question is, so that's like 10,000 families, right? 10,000 visitors, and maybe even more than that. So how will we be able to accommodate them lodging-wise?
Thank you for that, that question, Madam Chair. Counselor Gibson, as you can see, within our local organizing committee, there is a whole team dedicated to housing alone, and there is not only our partnership with a travel company, as well as Visit Albuquerque is playing a critical role in making sure that we can accommodate, because not only is it the friends and family, we also have all the officials that are coming in as well.
Counselor Gibson.
So I'm sorry, I just haven't even looked at this. I just kinda gave it to you right now. So how many rooms do you think, how many hotel rooms do you think will be used for this event, please?
Madam Chair and Counselor Gibson, I'd actually like to invite Tanya Armenta from Visit Albuquerque to kind of expand a little bit on that, if I may, please.
Members of the council, Counselor Gibson, to expand on that a little bit, there is a housing bureau, so there's a, utilizing a housing bureau, there's about 20 hotels that are in the mix right now. There are 7,000 hotel rooms that have been booked thus far. We're anticipating that it'll, it'll, it'd be approximately, if the 10,000 attendees do arrive, 10,000 athletes, we're estimating conservatively about 20,000 room nights. So that's what will be consumed over the period of the National Senior Games. There's also some additional ancillary other lodging available for other attendees beyond hotels. Does that answer it? Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. My question was regarding the fundraising. We have a goal, and I'm not sure what that dollar amount is, and where are we at with that goal?
Now, Madam Chair and Counselor Sanchez, appreciate that question. As I demonstrated in our sponsorship slide, we actually have already secured an estimated $500,000 of support from private sponsors. We anticipate that to continue to grow. Certainly, the city council's support, as well as our state legislature, we anticipate more dollars to be able to come in. And certainly, we have our Director of Philanthropy, Hazel Tollie, chair, she'd like to expand on any area in that regard.
Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Sanchez, of course, I just continue to follow up with the counties as well as, like, Gatorade and sports-specific companies that I've been sending proposals to, and I think in the next, probably the next 30 days, I ought to be able to start getting some answers to that as well. And so keeping my fingers crossed, but I think that we're gonna get some good news from, like, Kinesio Tape has expressed some interest as well.
Excellent. Thank you. And I also want to say that we have one of our councilors that will be participating in the Senior Games, that is Counselor Winter.[868.51][868.51](applause). Who we will have as a national champion after the games.[874.44][874.44](laughter).
Thank you, Mr. President, Counselor. I just hope my body holds up till then.[880.01][880.01](laughter).
Counselor Harris.
And one follow-up question. I guess we heard about how many room nights, but how many people do you think are gonna be here, including, you know, all the officials and family members? I mean, and what's the spend benefit to the community?
Madam Chair, Counselor Harris, I mean, we can estimate that it's probably gonna be about 60,000 individuals, because the, the fun part about this, because we have these folks that are traveling here, they bring large entourages with them. So I just went to Clearwater, Florida for the last qualifying games competition there, and you would be surprised of the kids and the grandkids that are there cheering on grandpa, or some cases, great-grandpa, around the track and field, and the high jump, and all these different sports. So we are anticipating quite a few individuals that will be here in Albuquerque, and we wanna show them the best of our city has to offer.
And other part of that, do you have any estimate of the direct spend or benefit to the economy?
If I may, Madam Chair, Counselor Harris, let me refer that possibly to, probably Tanya Armenta with Visit Albuquerque, you probably would have the most accurate information.
Madam Chair, members of the council, to answer your question, so we use Destinations International Calculator in terms of how many visitors we're anticipating we use the room nights. Our estimation is that the direct visitor spending will be $17 million. That, again, is a very conservative number. I do know the Department of Workforce Solutions has also run an analysis, and that is a $34 million economic impact to the, to the city.
Counselor Harris.
And it's just sort of a statement as well as a question, but recently, is at a Neighborhood Association meeting, we worked very hard, the city worked very hard, Parks and Rec. has done an excellent job on these pickleball courts up near Monzano Mesa, and the pickleballers who go there say it's perhaps one of the finest facilities in the country. But my, people who live around there say, what, what's the point of that?[1015.82][1015.82](laugh) You know what? We don't get it. If they don't play pickleball, they don't understand why they have this beautiful facility. But it's good to know just how much of a benefit, because those pickleball courts were a condition of getting them here, right? So...
Madam Chair, Counselor Harris, thank you so much for your support of that. We're really excited. And that's one of our largest registrants of athletes.
Yes, that's gonna be like at least 1,500, right, or more? Okay, thanks.
That's a big number.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I may just maybe cap this conversation off by saying that this has been a, really a one Albuquerque effort. Every, every city department is contributing staff and resources to make sure that these games are successful. And we all have appropriated dollars in the past for this project, and it's a citywide. So this is a major opportunity for, for our city, but also it's an opportunity for us to really bring the region together. We have facilities now all the way up to Coach de Pueblo, where they're, we're gonna be doing some of the, the swimming events at the lake, and the cycling. We've got programs scheduled for the two casinos to the north. So it's really, it really is a regional event. And I say that to you all because you talk to your colleagues in, you know, whether it's in Burnley or Rio Rancho or Sandoval County, or even, you know, in the legislature. This is an opportunity for New Mexico. And, and so all these athletes are coming through various communities, bringing the torch, like an Olympic event. We'll have a, a, a big celebration on Civic Plaza. We'll have the torch lit there for the duration of the games. So it is a major opportunity, but again, to the extent that the question was asked earlier about fundraising, Counselor Sanchez, your help and your support with organizations that you think would be interested, obviously, is important to us. It's, was slow in the process in raising dollars, and thanks to the efforts of some of you and the mayor, we've been able to get more and more sponsorships, but this is really an important event, and, and it'll really showcase Albuquerque and New Mexico. And these only happen every other year, and we're lucky to have it. And who knows, maybe we'll make this, the permanent home for this event at some point down the road, but the point is that it's a, it's a really big effort, and Ana has done a great job, and I also just wanna say kudos to Anthony Romero, who is in the audience as well. We, we assigned him to be really managing the program directly along with the, the rest of the staff, and they've done a great job. And so, again, we'll keep you posted as we move closer and closer to this event.
Counselor Borrego is asking that everyone who is involved with the Senior Games please stand and be recognized. Well, congratulations. I think this is gonna be a spectacular event, and June is just right around the corner, you know, and I just really wanna thank Counselor Winter, he's always really been advocating for this, and as Counselor Harris mentioned, you know, he was really advocating for these pickleball courts a few years back, and I think we all kind of didn't really know what, but if you learn about it, you actually hear that it's really a trending thing in the United States. So congratulations, Counselor Harris. So next item we have is Counselor Borrego, she has a proclamation.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask Dr. Pearlman from the university, if you'd come forward, please. And I think that, was Dave Campbell here? No, he left. Lawrence Rial, would you like here to stand with Dr. Pearlman, please? And anyone else who has a master's degree from the university in public administration, because this is, this is, if you could come forward, please, and stand with Dr. Pearlman? Thank you all. Okay, so this, this proclamation is regarding the School of Public Administration. Whereas UNM President Farrell Hetty believed there was a need for a program to prepare and train individuals for the growing complexity of modern management in the public sector, and whereas this education would provide the foundation for leadership and administrative roles in government, nonprofit, and interdisciplinary organizations in New Mexico. And whereas on February 11th, 1969, the University of New Mexico faculty approved the proposal submitted by UNM Vice President Chester Travelstead for establishment of a division of public administration. And whereas the UNM School of Public Administration celebrates its 50th anniversary in 2019 as the oldest public administration program in New Mexico. And whereas the UNM School of Public Administration is one of the original 17 programs accredited over 40 years ago by the Network of Schools of Public Policy Affairs and Administration, NASPA. And whereas the UNM School of Public Administration has over 2,000 graduates, 75% of who live, work, and serve communities throughout the state of New Mexico. And whereas UNM School of Public Administration graduates and students serve, and in the past, in elected and appointed offices at the highest levels of city and state government, including Chief of Staff to the Governor, State Treasurer, City Counselors, City Chief Administrative Officer, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Department Directors. And whereas in 2018, the U.S. News and World Report ranked the UNM School of Public Administration in the top 100 public affairs programs in the United States. Be it proclaimed by the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, that February 11th, 2019, is hereby recognized as UNM School of Public Administration Day, an acknowledgement of the leadership, accomplishment, and contributions of the UNM School of Public Administration to the state of New Mexico and the city of Albuquerque. And I am, I am so honored to present this to you all. This is actually my alma mater, and I am really honored to be in all of your presence. And Dr. Farrell Hetty would be proud of all of us, and Dr. Blumenfeld, and all of our former colleagues that have been in city government and state governments. So with that, Dr. Pearlman, would you care to say a few words?
Madam President, Counselor Borrego, I think we have the proof of the good job we're doing right here, and I want to thank all of you for signing and endorsing this proclamation. As you know, I have a passing interest in public administration academically and professionally, and I'm really honored to receive this, and I'm honored that you endorse our work, because we certainly endorse and honor yours. Thank you very much.
And I, Dr. Pearlman, could you just tell the council and, and the public about some of the upcoming activities that the university will be holding in honor of the 50th anniversary?
Madam President, Counselor Borrego, a week from tonight, we will cut a cake with President Stokes as the, she will cut the cake with me. I'll let her get the first piece. She's my boss.[1540.83][1540.83](laughter). And it's at 4:00 PM at the School of Public Administration on the third floor of Social Science Building. You're all invited. We'll also be having our 50th anniversary convocation on May 11th, I believe it is, at 4:00 PM in the, in Keller Hall at the University of New Mexico. And last year, we had a speaker that maybe no new, the mayor was our convocation speaker, and this year, we're going to have Speaker Brian Egle from the New Mexico State Legislature to address us. So we'll be having some other activities during the year, and as they go forward, we'll be sending emails to everyone to invite them, but I also, I think, I ought to say, this is my natural hair color as well.[1598.13][1598.13](laughter).
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to come forward?
One second. Counselor Harris.
Just a quick question, doctor. One thing I've noticed when I was looking through the catalog at UNM is, and other places too, I don't see that anybody offers a, an undergrad degree in public administration. I was kind of wondering why that is.
Madam President, Counselor Harris, that's a really good question. This is done all over the nation, and we are taking steps to remedy that. The first way we're taking steps to remedy that at UNM, at the School of Public Administration, is that we have created a minor in the College of Arts and Sciences. So in August of 2019, for the first time, students at the University of New Mexico will be able to take a minor in public administration. They will not be able to major in it, as you point out, but they will be able to minor in it. After that, what we hope, of course, is that we'll be able to get an undergraduate degree, but it's something that's sorely missed, and our audience, by and large, has been graduate students up until this point.
And so some universities around the country do offer an undergrad in that degree?
Madam President, Counselor Harris, yes, indeed, they do offer an undergraduate and undergraduate degree. In many places, they only offer graduate degrees as we do, but we are beginning to go down that road, and we also, I might mention for you, and given your professional background, that we offer joint master's degrees with the School of Law and also with the Master's of Community and Regional Planning. But I think you put your finger, Counselor Harris, on our, our one weakness, which is our undergraduate program.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also like to mention, Madam President and counselors, that there's also a public policy, a public health certificate that is being offered through the school.
Madam President, Counselor Borrego, we, about five years ago, started our second master's degree, which is, we have a master's in public administration. All the people that were up here, I believe, I don't want to misspeak, hold that degree, the MPA, which could be thought of as the MBA for public management. But we started five years ago, the Master's in Health Administration. So we have a number of graduates placed at the various hospitals and also at the various health maintenance organizations like Loveless and Presbyterian.
And before we wrap it up, Counselor Sanchez.
Real quickly, Dr. Pearlman, it seems like you were here only yesterday, working for Mayor Marty Chavis's Chief of Staff, and welcome back.
Madam President, Counselor Sanchez, thank you. It took a lot to get me down here.[1771.71][1771.71](laughter).
Thank you, Dr. Pearlman.
Thank you very much.
And if you'd like to come forward.[1779.63][1779.63](applause). And if you'd like to come forward.
GRT report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. You should have a handout in front of you. Looks like this. Oh, sorry. Do you all have it? Okay. Just a quick review of city revenues. The FY19 cumulative GRT growth was 2.8% for the December report. It's a little over half percent higher than the FY19 estimated growth rate of 2.2%. If you look down at the graph below, you'll see that for the last four months, GRT's been at or above that projected 2.2%. And for three of four months, it's been at 3% or higher. As far as sectors, the growth, the healthcare and social services, professional, scientific, and tech services, and accommodation and food services show that the largest cumulative growth changes. And of course, healthcare and social services, that's one of our largest sectors. And professional, scientific, and tech, well, that's where we'll find a lot of our higher paying jobs, which is a positive note. For FY19, second quarter long-term projections coming from Bieber, they remain virtually unchanged from last quarter. We've got FY19 year-over-year growth projected at 1.3% in 19, 1.5 for FY20. I'll take you over to the second page. You'll just see some, a graphic there for some of the faster-growing sectors. I'll note that construction still is in negative territory. We're recovering from low building permit values that happened in FY18, but we're hoping to see that recover in FY20. And then, over on the final page, you'll see our employment report for December. You probably are aware of the fact that we added 10,300 jobs in December. That's 2.6% growth. And at the bottom, just quickly, the last graphic, you'll see that we're finally catching up with some of our peers, El Paso and Tucson in particular. And that's my quick report. I can try to answer any questions or get back with you with information if I'm not able to.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you. And about a year or so ago, I think, actually, he was the auditor at that time, mayor now, wrote a letter to TRD. And I think they're looking at auditing how they're actually releasing funds. And then the municipal league, I don't know, did we actually join that lawsuit? Maybe you guys know.
President Pena, Counselor Harris, we filed that lawsuit.
Okay.
We initiated it.
Okay. Oh, excellent. And when did you file the lawsuit?
Madam President, Counselor Harris, I believe it was in November last year. And so, we have, at the time when we first filed, I believe we had four jurisdictions. Since then, we filed an amended complaint about two weeks ago, and added an additional 15. So, I think we're at a total of either 18 or 19 jurisdictions, which would include municipalities and counties in the state.
And did the, the state or the taxation revenue department know this lawsuit was coming?
Madam President, Counselor Harris, I presume so.
Okay, because I'm looking at the numbers. They go from the negative and then they come positive quickly. And it seems to correspond with around when that lawsuit was filed. So, I think that was a good job on behalf of the city and the municipal league to look after us. Thanks.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego.
So, in, in the month of December and November 2018, there's a 1% growth in, in jobs. Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Madam, could you point me to what you're looking at, please?
The final page of your report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The top. There's a 1% difference.
So, Madam President, member, it's, so for December, you'll see 10,0300 jobs added? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
With a growth of 2.6%, correct?
Right. So, the change, the, the change in jobs, what, what is the highest growth of job sector? I mean, is it construction, or what is that?
Madam Chair, no, it's actually, if I remember.
Is it healthcare?
I think I have it. I believe it's healthcare.
Healthcare?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have projections for, you know, in the last year, the council has approved a number of different projects? And is there any projection for how many jobs will be created based on, on some of that information?
Madam President, members-
Do you guys do that?
Of the council, Bieber does a lot of research and has a lot of information on, on projections for individual sectors. And so, I could actually look at items that the council has approved on projects for, and then compare that to those projections. Would that be something you're interested in?
Could you send us some information about those projections? Because there were a number of projects that we approved over the last year. And I'd be interested in knowing how many jobs would be created.
Counsel President, may I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
President Pena, Counselor Borrego, we, through the LITA and IRB programs, we have created commitments to over 1,000 jobs over the next two years. But for modeling and forecasting purposes, we try not to count those chickens before they hatch, so they're not in the five-year forecast or anything, because we like to make those very conservative. But as Christine said, she'd be happy to provide you those numbers.
And one, one last question. I know there's been some talk about recession. And I think the dates have been like differing depending on what economist you talk to. But I guess the question that I have is, have we, have we talked internally about, and I'm sorry about my voice, I apologize. I had laryngitis for two days. And in some circles, that could be a blessing, I guess. But I'd just be interested in knowing how we're sort of moving forward as a city, and thinking about that, you know, prediction, I guess, for, because that, that trend is, 20, 2021, 2022 is not that far away. So, I'd just be concerned about how we're looking at our budget.
Well, Madam President, members of the council, that's certainly something we're looking carefully at and keeping track of. In the near future, well, I just don't want to say very much about that. We're certainly, it's certainly a concern. We're keeping an eye on the national experts, who are keeping an eye on the, on the country's economy.
Any other questions? Counselor Jones, I mean, I'm sorry, Counselor Gibson.
We look so much alike. So, thank you, Madam Chair. One question, and I'm sorry if you kind of talked about this, I was, my attention was diverted a little bit there. Do you have any idea, want to take a guesstimate of what our growth may be in the coming year? Next budget, for next budget?
Madam Chair and Counselor, the current FY, FY20, is that the year you're referring to? We've got a 3.4% just for general GRT growth estimated for 20. That's, that, you'll find that in the FY, in the five-year forecast. And that's not, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item is item four, economic development discussion. It says here that we have none, but I actually think, you know, the whole discussion on the senior games is really part of our economic development discussion. Next item is five, administration question and answer period. Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Harris.
Yeah, so maybe get back to me, because this is a surprise question. But with the, all the visitors from the senior games coming, and I guess we're gonna have like 60,000 of them, a couple of years back, I was getting visited from hotel owners who were very upset with the amount of auto thefts at hotels. So, I'm wondering, are we gonna address that? And especially with this sort of landmark event in our city, if there's gonna be any special attention to make sure that people don't leave with a bitter taste in their mouth from having their car stolen in a hotel.
Counsel President Pena, Counselor Harris, that's a great question. We actually started sort of practicing for this last year at Balloon Fiesta, where we had extended auto theft tactical plans, including ones focused at the hotels. And I think you saw that the pretty dramatic drop in auto thefts both during that period and for the year as a whole. So, we plan to expand on that. And if you'd like, as we get closer to the date, APD can come and talk a little more about those tactical plans. Although, we don't like to necessarily give away everything that we're doing in advance. But, yes.
Okay. Next item is item six, the journal. Counselor Borrego.
Madam President, I move approval of the January 23rd journal.
Second. There's a motion in the second for approval of the January 23rd journal. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item is item seven, communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC 324 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC 324 is approval of first supplemental agreement to add grant monies, and second supplemental agreement to add general fund monies to the FY19 social service contracts for the operation of the West Side Emergency Housing Center between Heading Home and the city of Albuquerque. The administration is requesting immediate action for this EC, approving the supplemental agreements with Heading Home for the operation of the West Side Emergency Housing Center. The reason for the request is that they do not want the services being offered to the people experiencing homelessness at the West Side Emergency Housing Center to end on March 15, 2019. This will require two-thirds approval of the council. There's a motion in the second for approval. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Counselor Borrego.
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
There's a motion in the second for approval of the letter of introduction. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item is eight, reports to the committee. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, January 28th, and reports out the following items. In a matter of O-23, that'd be without recommendation, as substituted. In a matter of O-48, that I do pass as amended. I move to accept the committee report, the Finance and Government Operations Committee.
There's a motion, there's a motion in the second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. And next is deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any with, deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. This is O-18-40, amending Chapter 2, Article 4, Part 13, RWA 1994, the filing of petition ordinance, and amending Chapter 2, Article 4, RWA 1994. To add the maintenance of campaign in off-years of ordinance, I move deferral until the 20th of February.
There's a motion in the second for a deferral of O-18-40. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. This is committee substitute out O-44, the annexation, 17EPC 40061, 17EPC 40062, annexing 12.3 acres, more or less, located in the northernly portion of Tracks 14-2-20, Row 4, Unit A, west, west of Westland, town of Atresco, Atresco Grant, located north of Interstate 40, between Arroyo Vista Boulevard and 118th Street, and amending the zone map to establish SU2 for town center zoning. I move a deferral until the February 20th meeting. And I've got a companion bill that is still in committee. I'd like those two bills to come forward together.
There's a motion in three seconds for the deferral of O-44. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you again, Madam President. This is O-45. That is amending Chapter 2, Article 6 of the revised ordinance of Albuquerque relating to the Commission of American Indian Alaska Native Affairs. I move deferral until the February 20th meeting.
There's a motion in the second for a deferral of O-45. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item is nine, consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? For the individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board of commission, please stand if you are in the audience. And thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you. So-
I move approval of the consent agenda.
There's a motion in the second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next item is 10, general public comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, and then the light will turn yellow and the bell will ring, indicating you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At two minutes, the light will turn red and, and ring to indicate your time is up. Our first speaker of the evening is Mr. Don Trader.
I would be ashamed to watch the Super Bowl or any football game. I would be ashamed as hell to enjoy watching men brutally injure each other's knees, shoulders, elbows, necks, brains. Many former football players suffer from concussions. They suffer severe headaches, Alzheimer's, depression, dementia, alcoholism, other drug addiction, violence toward family and friends, suicide. The donated brains of 110 out of 111 dead former NFL players suffered serious brain disease. Is encouraging boys and men to play football less harmful than addicting them to cigarettes, booze, heroin, or cocaine? Instead of cars and violent sports, I enjoy lots of exercise and walking. Instead of TV and video games, I enjoy reading, gardening, sunbathing. Instead of junk food, computers, and smartphones, I enjoy meeting people face-to-face, deep conversations, dancing, eating only healthy food. Too much sitting is as bad as smoking cigarettes. The only material possession we each have from birth to death is our body. The only body we can ever have. No other material possession can give us more misery or more pleasure. I aim for healthy pleasure. Why suffer?
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Downey X., followed by Sandra Bagay. If you can make your way to the front, there's some seats available as we move down the agenda. And then, Mr. Rudolph Serano.
On May the 12th, I attended Mayor Keller's State of the City pep rally. And yay, hey, you know, it was, it was cool. Okay? But there was one thing, with all due respect, Mr. Keller did not tell the truth about. The crime epidemic that is terrorizing our city has not gone down since he has assumed the duties as our fearless leader. And yes, I will admit, the mayor inherited 100% of this crime problem in our fair city. But to just say that crime rates have fallen when we all see and may have been victims of this crime spree is somewhat disingenuous at best. No neighborhood is immune to this crime scourge. That's just the reality. An estimated 7,000 cars were stolen last year. Homicides are still one of the highest per capita's in the nation. Our children's wellness and child's deaths are the worst in the country. The opium inhaler epidemic is spreading like a wildfire, helping to fuel this crime wave, along with the proliferation of guns. Businesses are being robbed out of business. The FBI ranks Albuquerque the worst city in the country for burglaries. More police and more judges are not the solution. They're part of the problem. Poverty breeds crime. As long as wages are stagnant and you keep giving our dollars away to the super rich, crime will continue. It's gonna get worse before it gets better. Maybe for once, you try investing in the people of Albuquerque. Just try, you know, just think of the new computers you could have bought at a school in the South Valley with the $10 million you gave away to golf, to Top Golf and Netflix.
Thank you. Sandra Bagay, followed by Rudolph Serano.
I'll give up my time at this moment. Thank you.
Mr. Rudolph Serano. Art Tannenbaum, followed by Kathy Lynch, followed by Tadde Naminsky.
Ladies and gentlemen, the man said 30 or 90 days. I chose 90. As I was saying before I was so rudely interrupted, the Transit Department needs real leadership. So, which of the city departments do you think is the worst? I'm sorry, that's too negative. I should frame it a different way. Which of the city departments has the most- Which of the city departments has the most room for improvement? It's got to be Transit. If there's a department in this town that's worse than Transit, I don't even want to know about it. So you need a good Transit Director. What do you have to do to attract a good Transit Director to this town? You have to offer a city with a good quality of life for the prospective Transit Director to live in. You have to offer an attractive compensation package for your new Transit Director, who's going to lead ABQ Ride into the twenty-first century. You need good pay and benefits for the Transit Director. This needs to be funded adequately. I don't know why there's an ABQ Ride spokesman position, but that's got to go. What's the ABQ Ride spokesman going to say at this point? Sorry? The Transit Department spokesman could say sorry a hundred twenty million times. So you could use that money for the ABQ Ride spokesperson position, put it towards the ABQ Ride Director position, attract a good Transit Director to this town. I'm sure there's more money in the Transit Department budget that's completely wasted that could be devoted to that. Also, you can offer the prospective Transit Director great opportunity. Instead of looking at your mass transit system as a broken system, why not look at it as a blank slate? Somewhere, there's a passionate Transit professional who would love to work with a blank slate and provide the City of Albuquerque with a real mass transit system.
Thank you, Mr. Tannenbaum. Kathy Fitch.
Kathy Fitch, Madam President and esteemed counselors. Many of you have seen me in other positions and other hats with the Albuquerque Burne Leo County Government Commission Behavioral Health Initiative. I want to thank you. I have been testifying on the assisted outpatient treatment since it was in the legislature in two thousand and sixteen. And see from the agenda tonight that it looks like it has made it through the machinations to getting approval. And I wanted to say that not all mentally ill people are violent. There was a study in two thousand and fifteen that only one in eighteen hundred treated patients committed a violent crime. The flip side on the untreated skyrocketed to one in five hundred. The arrests that people have to go through or mental health commitment and the timeframe it has to happen within to qualify for assisted outpatient often represents those patients that are no longer under control by their family. And to expand to this additional modality, I think, is critical. I am here today, a victim of knife violence, and a voice of the victims who don't often get to speak, but I sincerely thank you for helping this become a reality.
Questions? Thank you. Councilor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Fitch, for being here. We miss you on Grove Street, number one. But I know that you've been really, really very vocal and active in moving the ball forward on this really important legislation, so I thank you.
So many important things are happening with your support, and it excites me greatly.
Councilor Benton.
Thank you, Dr. Fitch, for serving as part of the whole effort on the subcommittees. And not everyone realizes how much work you're doing. That's why we wanted to make sure you'd have the opportunity to speak before the ABCGC every chance you felt like it was important for the Commission to hear from you. And thanks for coming to speak to us. AOT, this is really a key piece.
Very proud of the progress the city and county have made.
Well, thank you for your service, hon.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Taddeus Nemenski. He will be our final speaker this evening.
Thank you. My name is Taddeus Nemenski. Well, we all, probably most of you know, that's two weeks ago, very well-known criminal defense lawyer, Serna, who defended one F D D cop who was charged with murder his wife in Las Lunas, where he resigned. Yes, he was arrested for D W I. That was two weeks ago. Now, last week was another well-known judge, family judge, was arrested for D W I. Well, let me ask you. If you remain silent, that means yes. How many of you drink? All of them, looks like it. How many of you drive and drink and drive? No silence, again? Well, that's what we had, people listening in Albuquerque. Now, yes, that's what we leave. The city council promoted alcohol all over downtown area. All these microbrewery, restaurants, wine and beer. Yes, you can get drunk with that wine and beer. Now, running half-time. Let's go to Transit. N A P D, cameras, recording videos. They come filming public, but not themselves. Department of Justice and Department of Assemblymen chief order to film themselves. Thank you. I wasn't able to finish.
Thank you, Mr. Nemenski. Next item is going to be item eleven, Announcements. But before we go to that, I'd like to make an announcement that I kind of skipped over earlier. I just want to welcome on board Mr. Santiago Chavez. He is our new Chief of Staff and Deputy C E O. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Madam President.
Councilor Harris.
Yes, a question that came to mind during the public speakers is that in terms of Transit and drivers' pay, now Councilor Sanchez and I have been working for years to try to get Transit drivers' pay up, and I think we finally did. And how is that, is that changing, the turnover for Transit drivers?
Councilor President Pena, Councilor Harris, yes, we were able to initiate some targeted pay increases for drivers. And the issue now is, we're doing well with recruiting, although we're continuing to work on that, both as a marketing effort and as an outreach effort. It's also retention, so there's still a lot of movement from Transit to solid waste. So it's just something we have to continue to work on in terms of the quality of the job and making sure that we're looking at, you know, their experience in addition to just their salary. I think one of the improvements that we've come up with is, some of the new buses coming online are going to have some protective screening for the drivers if they care to use it, because they do experience a lot of abuse and that sort of thing in the seat.
And what about, is the pay for Transit still less than solid waste? Or have we gotten parity yet?
Councilor President Pena, Councilor Harris, I would want to check that and confirm with you, but I know our goal was parity. I just don't know if we achieved it at all the steps.
Thank you. Any other questions now? So we are on item eleven, Announcements. Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, February seventh, at five P M. in the Vincent E. Griego Chambers.
Council Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be an Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting on Saturday, February ninth, and Saturday, February sixteenth, at nine A M. in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor. There will also be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, February thirteenth, at five P M. in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor.
Council Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, February eleventh, at five P M. in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor.
Council Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a Lower Petroglade Public Improvement District Board meeting on Wednesday, February the thirteenth, at ten A M. in the D M D Conference Room, seventh floor, Room seventy ninety-six.
Now we are on item twelve, Public Hearings. There are none. Next, item thirteen, Approvals. EC three twenty-four, approval of the first supplemental agreement to add grant monies and second supplemental agreement to add general fund monies to the FY nineteen social service contracts for the operation of the West Side Emergency Housing Center between Heading Home and the City of Albuquerque. I move approval. There's a motion in the second for approval. Is there anyone signed up to speak? No? Anybody from the administration? Counselors? Council Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. While our friends from Family and Community Services make their way down, I'll just go ahead and start. Just quickly about, with regard to the budget, the, my question had to do with the amount that's included here, roughly two-thirds of a million dollars. And then looking at that, and that's covering us through the end of the year, so based on my arithmetic, are we looking at about two million a year for operation of the center?
Madam Chair and Councilor Benton, actually, our budget, when we look at running our West Side Emergency Housing Center, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for FY twenty, it's about a four-point-five million dollar budget.
Okay. It's a pretty high ticket. Trying to remember that, how that would, what that would equal in housing vouchers. Or for funding Heading Home, for example, just that amount of money, just as a comparison.
Well, I think when we, our overall homeless strategy, we're asking for thirteen million, I think, of housing vouchers. I mean, overall, I mean.
In addition to these funds?
No, that's just our big plan. And for about twelve thousand per year is what a one-bedroom housing voucher would cost with some supportive services. So there's no question that that could purchase a lot of housing vouchers. I think what we know from this, from operating November to March, definitely gets people out of the cold during our coldest time of the year, but it's really not serving our homeless citizens adequately. And so by expanding those services and by also having case management services and health services that we're working on with our partners at U N M., I think we can better respond to the needs of our homeless residents by expanding and to really having them safe and not on the streets.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. If I could, and I guess it's been about six years. I held a press conference calling for opening this, opening the West Side Shelter year round, and I was kind of called in the carpet by many of my friends in the provider community, saying this is not the answer, focus on something else. That's what I went and did. But I do appreciate the fact that this is an emergency shelter. And that emergency, I think, needs to be seen by us collectively in the city as a short-term emergency of operating this facility. But that very much also, in terms of solving the problem, it is, it's a Band-Aid, it's a temporary, it truly is an emergency move on our part, and I support it. But I just wanted to, I mean, if we stacked up the number of vouchers that can be provided. Having said that, I think, counselors, you know, I'm also an advocate for affordable and supportive housing projects that we can't be super effective with just a voucher without the efficiencies that come with scattered site, but robust supportive housing projects throughout the city. And those are expensive, and I think there's money to be saved sometimes in taking nuisance properties and things like hotels or older buildings that are not serving the city well and trying to be creative about the use of those for getting roofs over people's heads as well and having supportive housing with community. That a lot of the arguments in favor of tiny homes and that type of approach is that people have community, that they get to know one another, they're sharing meals, they're sharing work, they're sharing rides to work, they're looking out for each other. That's really our long-term future, and we appreciate the administrations coming forward this year with robust budgets for both construction and operations. Thank you.
Council Gibson.
Oh. Well, if I may, Madam Chair and Counselor, I did want to add that one of the things that I think I'm quite excited about is, this is a heavy lift for our full community. And while the city, it takes the lion's share of operating emergency housing, and point well made, this is emergency housing, this isn't the long-term solution, this is to keep people safe and warm, that we have an ask of about eight hundred thousand into the county, that we've had really good conversations with the county about their support to help cover some transportation costs, some of the food costs, and some of the case management costs, as well as we have some really great, robust conversations happening with U N M. So part of the things that we have learned since we came with this administration is the cost of the nine-one-one calls out to that emergency housing operation twenty miles outside of town. And we know that when there's a nine-one-one call, that's pulling an ambulance out of service or a fire. And so we've had really good conversations now with U N M., asking them to help with providing health services out there for a few hours a night to address immediate health needs and minimize that. So I just want to add that while that is a large budget item that we're mentioning, we're really trying to work with our partners at the county and U N M. to just all do this heavy lift together. And I'm very optimistic those conversations have gone very well.
Thank you. Council Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to touch on the transitional versus permanent housing. You know, I'm in agreement with the philosophy to, you know, put more funding into permanent housing, but the fact of the matter is, many of the people who, you know, we're trying to serve are just not good candidates for that. We want them to be successful. The other thing, too, is that, you know, we absolutely have to have transitional housing. We have to have more than what we have now. So I'm glad that, you know, we're going down this road. This was, that was one of the first things I looked at when I came on the council that winter, was opening up the West Side Shelter. But there's two things, as I recall, the transportation, driving people out there and back every day, and sometimes several trips every day. That was a really high-ticket item. And so are we under contract with someone to do that for us, to look for people? And is that still the same setup?
Yes. Madam Chair and Counselor Gibson, yes, right now, we have a contract with Edetta Coaches, and that is exactly, that is one of the high-ticket items. It's a total of nine hundred and forty thousand on our transportation, and that's limiting it to, we added a four P M. pickup recently. We started that over the holidays because people are really eager to get off the streets and get out to West Side. So that includes a four, five, six, and seven P M. pickup at Coronado Park. We have some new drop-offs. We've worked with the neighborhood around Hope Works, and a morning drop-off is happening now at Hope Works. And we're actually working on a, with a faith-based group in the Northeast Heights to have a pickup and drop-off there. But there's no question, the transportation costs are what is really large ticket to go twenty miles outside of there. And I think that's why we're hopeful in the future that with a capital ask into the state that we could bring that in more centrally located here in our community, it would be more available for homeless individuals to get the services they need, and then that would just really save the costs on transportation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Director. And that nine hundred and forty thousand dollars for transportation, is that for twelve months?
Yes, that is.
Okay. And then the last thing, the vouchers, applying the vouchers to this, or funds for vouchers to this, I think is a pretty good idea, but I'm a little concerned, because we have had vouchers that were dedicated for certain, for the use of certain providers, like New Mexico Aid Services. like New Mexico Aid Services. Is that, will that, will any of those providers be affected, or will they still be getting the vouchers?
The contractor, Madam Chair and Counselor Gibson, the contractors that we have that currently have housing vouchers continue to have those housing vouchers. So, there is not a decrease or an effect. I will say that when we knew that we didn't want to close the shelter in, in March, is that we looked at, at our own internal Family and Community Services budget and looked at the line items that we would be reverting money, and that's where this money is coming from, from our own existing budget for this year. And then we've included this full ask in our FY twenty budget, but with no effect to housing vouchers, no negative impact.
Thank you. Counsel Borrego.
Thank you, Counsel Gibson, because you asked some of the questions that I was interested in regarding the transport, because that is a long distance, twenty miles is quite a, quite a distance. And so I guess my question is, after hearing that, is the nine-hundred-and-forty thousand that you said is a twelve-month number, right? Is that part of this four-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fourteen? Is that, is that included as part of that number?
Madam Chair, Counselor Borrego. It is not. So, currently-
It's in addition.
It's, right. So, currently, we, under the existing contract, we contract with Heading Home to operate the West Side Shelter, and then Heading Home uses some of those funds to subcontract with Herrera Transportation. However, the plan is, starting on March sixteenth, that the city will just contract directly with the transportation provider to provide, provide those transportation services. So, we are not building those funds into Heading Home's contract through this supplemental agreement, and we'll be doing a request for bids soon for that, those transportation services.
So, my question is, when, when these individuals decide that they want to go to this place twenty miles away and they get on the bus, what liability issue is the city incurring if they're, if any, traveling back and forth? Or is there some, a way that we know that these individuals are making this decision and that they, you know, if there was a wreck or if there was some issue, I mean, how, what is the city's responsibility in this? And I, I, you guys are all shaking your heads, so I don't, I don't think that there's an answer to that, but I'd like to know that. And the other issue that I am a little bit concerned about is that if these individuals choose not to come back on the bus, or to go out there not on the bus, and they're walking along the interstates, I, I just have some iss, some concern about that, and I'd like to know what we're doing to sort of alleviate those problems, especially when it comes to safety and an interstate that we know we've seen a lot of problems with lately.
Mr. Aguilera.
Counsel President Penya, Counsel Borrego, we, I can certainly provide you with a more detailed analysis of that, but generally, the city provides insurance on our all-city vehicles. We, we are self-insured as well, so we have a very active risk division, so, and this is a contract also. So, they, the company that we contract with will have their own presumably, but I don't have the specific details, but I can get that to you, and I'm happy to sit down and discuss.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, thank you, appreciate it. There's a motion, a second for approval of EC three twenty-four. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. There's also a request for immediate action.
Remove.
There's a second, and, no?
We need immediate action.
Oh, I had a note for immediate action here. Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay. Next item is fourteen, final actions. Counsel Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. This is O-dash-eighteen-dash-thirty-six, amending public purchase ordinance requiring city council approval supplements for professional technical service and supplements to contracts ordered through the competitive seal proposal process. The administration is still working on some amendments, so we're going to defer for two weeks.
There's a motion, a second for deferral of O-thirty-six. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes, but, I'm sorry, we had one person signed up to speak, it was Mr. Art Tannenbaum. O-thirty-six, it was deferred.
Cavalier council members, I stand before you thinking Albuquerque deserves better. All the joking around down here, you're talking about money, joking around about money, joking around about everything, seem to have all the time in the world for self-congratulatory, self-serving rituals and whatever it is you're doing. Anyway, a lot of money has been wasted and stolen because of the procurement setup. It's just crazy. So, yeah, I'm all in favor of finally getting some improvement with the procurement ordinance. I don't know what to tell you. Have you ever tried to explain the art to an out-of-towner? Try doing that in two minutes or less. It's, it's inexplicable to explain how we got to this point with the ART scandal, I'm sorry, you can't call it the art project anymore, how we got to this point with the art scandal, where we're at, and how we're supposed to remedy the calamity. So, Albuquerque deserves better. I would hope that the city council members would be more sincere and businesslike in how, at least in how you present yourselves to the public. And also, the quality of life in Albuquerque needs improvement. You know, the tax increase last year, most of it's dedicated allegedly to public safety. The public needs to see some results. You can't just keep saying, "Well, you know, hang with us, have faith, someday all your dreams are going to come true." We need results. There's too much going in and too little coming back out. Thank you so much for your valuable time.
Thank you, Mr. Tannenbaum. So, that item was deferred. Counsel Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm moving R.A. one, it's amending the city council rules of procedure, Article two, section four, Article three, section twenty-one, relating to the Internal Operations Committee. I'm going to move a due pass.
There's a motion, there's a motion, a second for a due pass. Counsel Gibson.
If there's anybody to speak on it, or maybe we could hear from the staff, maybe Ms. Yara.
Yes, Madam President and Counselors, this rules amendment is proposing to discontinue the Internal Operations Committee of the council. It is one of the three standing committees in our current rules. This committee is charged with city council staff, physical facilities, and the operating budget of our council services department. This amendment would remove the Internal Operations Committee, and such issues would be vetted by, by myself as director with the president of the council. In, in the past, it has been, the Internal Operations Committee has traditionally heard approvals for special program requests of the council. There used to exist a thing called the Council Projects Fund where some money was segregated for that purpose. Recent practice has been to vet those programs through the operating budget and through one-off resolutions throughout the year. And staffing issues, although can still be vetted by this committee, we have some issues when we're, we want to discuss certain individuals or more sensitive issues, and because this is a public meeting, it's subject to the Open Meetings Act, it's difficult to speak with the members of the committee about these sensitive staffing issues, so.
Counsel Harris.
I mean, can we, we go into executive session in a city council up here all the time on personnel matters, and we could always go into executive session on the Internal Ops Committee, couldn't we?
Madam President, Counsel Harris, yes, that is possible. However, recent direction from the AG's office tells us that we need to be very specific about what we're talking about in executive session, so that would mean naming people directly or certain sensitive issues as well.
But anytime we hire somebody, it's ultimately a public record, right?
Madam President, Counsel Harris, yes.
Anytime we accept a resume, it's a public record, isn't it?
Yes, it is, sir. The, the sensitive issues I'm kind of referring to are when we have to take possible disciplinary action. The employees have rights in that regard.
So, we would just have to kind of outline that vaguely, but not that specifically, otherwise we violate their rights. And counselors, I can't tell you how much I am opposed to this. In the city charter, one of the things, we, we are not allowed to get involved in personnel actions, except for city council staff. We're the governing body, we run a council office. If anything goes wrong with our, our staff and this, if something went bad this week, for instance, they wouldn't be talking to Stephanie Yara, they'd be talking to Clarissa Penya. And in fact, I'd like to go the opposite direction and actually have more oversight over what happened to personnel, because what we found out with our last directors, stuff was happening that the counselors were oblivious to. I mean, this is our, this is our office, and, you know, I want to be very clear that, you know, Ms. Yara works for us, and, and we're the ultimate decision-makers. And I think this kind of broad delegation is just a real mistake, and, and we could perhaps work with the AG and, and do some of these things, but I think we can, I mean, if it's a strictly personnel issue, I don't see why we cannot go into executive session, or what the current rule says is consultation, which is one by one. And that doesn't have to be a, an Open Meetings Act issue. So, I'm going to be voting against this, and, and I'm kind of surprised it showed up because, you know, this is the kind of thing that you thought maybe could have talked to the counselors about. I don't know, any counselor even heard about this until today. But, so anyway, I don't think it's a good idea.
Counsel Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I know that, that part of the motivation, I have spoken to the sponsor on this, and part of the concern, of course, is that, that, that we had a special fund that was generally used for, it was called the Council Special Projects Fund. I don't know the, about how that came about or the inception of how that came about, but that turned out to be a, an opportunity, I guess, for people to come before the council and ask for money for a special project. And there was a perception that those special projects weren't spread around fairly between nine council districts. I happen to not think that that's the way we should be spending money based on even division between nine council districts, but that's just my opinion. But at the time, that was part of the concern, and I share that concern. I was even accused of getting too much of the money for projects in, in District Two. And, and that may be true, because a lot of the arts programs and so forth occur in District Two, but not because I was just trying to get a bigger share of the pie. Anyway, that, I just want to be on, on the record about that. I share some of the concerns that, that Counsel Harris is bringing up. I'm particularly concerned about the idea that if we go into executive session to discuss a, a personnel matter, according to Ms. Yara, we have to publish the name of that person. If we're going to publish the name of that person, anybody, Mr. City Attorney, please to chime in if I'm wrong about this, but if we're going to do that, I would prefer that we do that in sort of a quiet, still under the Open Meetings Act, still published and so forth, and then under a quieter venue than out here under the lights, or in an executive session where it's already being told to the public that that's one, the one person who we're in there talking about in an executive session. That doesn't seem to work from my standpoint, but that worries me about it. Otherwise, you know, I agree, this committee is kind of a, we should collectively be making these decisions as counselors, and, and I, I do agree with, with what Counsel Harris was talking about in these situations, that there, we can't do a rolling quorum of our own, but there's nothing to prevent the Director of Council Services from polling the counselors on an issue of, of such importance, and I believe that's what happened last time. I don't think that issue that, that was referred to was heard in, in, in Internal Ops. But, but I'm fully in agreement about the whole thing of having a grab-bag of special projects, and that we should be doing things that way. Those kind of projects should be brought before city council and, and appropriated as we would any other appropriation or be done as part of the operating budget as we would any other requests from an organization that's trying to get started up.
Counsel Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I have served on the committee several years, and I do not believe it's a grab-bag situation when you're looking at different projects. I think when these individuals come in to look at these projects, they come in with a budget, in most cases, sometimes they have not, and we've deferred those, but I think they've come in with a full budget and why they feel these projects are needed, and what they are trying to do with their 501(c) threes. You know, I don't mind putting these projects before the entire council. I do have concerns regarding doing away with this committee altogether. I think it's, over the years, we've done a very good job that have involved issues that are internal, and we've been able to discuss. As far as the media attending meetings, they are open to attend these meetings. In many cases, the media does not show up. These aren't really controversial issues. I have never seen where we've gone into executive session, not one time in the entire time that I have been here regarding a personnel issue. We've never gone there on any of these issues. I mean, that potentially could happen, but again, I would hate to see this committee depleted completely, when there's been a lot of good work over the years, not just by myself, by me or other council members, but previous council members that have done some really good work for the City of Albuquerque. You know, maybe we should go back and look on what we want to include in this committee and defer this for two weeks and see if we can come up with a plan that is equitable and fair, you know, to the committee if we continue it, and if it's a will of this council, then we can go ahead and move, move this bill forward. But I will not support the bill in its current form.
Madam President.
Counsel Jones has, Counsel Jones.
Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think in light of some of the things we've discussed here, I also believe that this committee is not serving the purpose that we might have wanted it to do, and maybe that's because we need to tighten the rules, maybe we need to discuss exactly what it is and get that written, and perhaps we need to get some opinion, some legal opinion on this before we do anything unusual. So, I would, if the sponsor would agree, I would obviously make a motion to defer for two weeks.
Counsel Harris.
I think that what, there's a lot of meat here that we've been discussing, and I think, and the, this committee doesn't meet all that often, we, we're not in any hurry to, to fix a problem that, you know, some of us don't think needs fixing or can, or could use a different approach. I'd suggest a thirty-day deferral, I think it gives a little more time.
Counsel Jones.
I think I made a motion, was it seconded?
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't approve of that, but the sponsor might.
So, if I may, Madam President, I'm fully agreeing with a two-week deferral, and I think it's a good idea to get a legal opinion on this to weigh in, but it does seem pretty clear to me that this committee has not, is not done what it was intended to do, what it was described to do, and it's kind of taken on other things, which really, I think, are really questionable. So, I think we, we could use, you know, definitely a, a legal opinion on that, and also, we need to do what we've been saying that we need to do for a long time, and that is find a different way to fund these projects, instead of whoever is there closest to the money getting it. And that has been what's happening. So, I'm very happy to defer it for two weeks, so.
There's a motion and a second for a deferral. I think I had pushed it over to Counsel Jones to close, so with that, I think I'll save my comments until the two-week deferral as well. So, there is a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. There be no further business, this council meeting is adjourned.